So, good evening, everyone. Squishin', welcome, welcome to our November 12th Town Council meeting. Sorry for the delay, standing room only. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellina?
Present.
Councilman Krokovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President is currently absent, but will be coming out.
He's on his way. So I'm just sitting in for him. I welcome the scouts here this evening, our police officers here this evening, Kemper Sports Management, welcome. Do you want to go out of order? Do we want, can we go out of order this evening?
If it's possible, Council President, if the Kemper, and most importantly, Mr. Kronheim, our contract compliance officer, would present it and then introduce the Kemper people, both Mr. Blake, the Vice President from Chicago, and Mr. Parker, who is the General Manager, to report as the administration indicated we would as to, I would call it, almost the first complete season of golf at Rock Spring.
And we do want to hear about that. So colleagues, are okay to put all our updates?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, just introduce yourself.
Can everybody hear me? How are you? I'm David Kronheim, I'm the Contract Compliance Officer for the Township. You know, last time I was here, it was, I think there may have been some snow still on the ground, it was March and April, and the success of this venture was far from a certainty. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll let you go through, I think that's fair.
Changing of the guard.
You know, we, the Township was in the process of closing on the Rock Spring property. You know, everybody hoped and thought it might be a success, but, you know, we had no idea of knowing exactly what would happen. So it's a great relief to be here and a great, with great excitement that I'm here to report on the success of the year. And I think, you know, I've used this in conversation with Rich and with the mayor, that if you allow me mixing sports metaphors, this wasn't a home run, this was a grand slam this year. This really could not have gone any better in year one. And particularly kind of the arc of the year from where we started to where we ended up. In the beginning of the season, obviously, we, the Township acquired the property, closed on the property in April, we didn't open until in May. There had been some deferred maintenance that, you know, Montclair, when they put the course to bed at the end of the season last year, knew they were going to sell it, and they didn't do the things that a typical golf course operator would do in the fall to sort of set the table for a successful spring. You know, what did that mean? Well, it meant that they had, you know, after a very difficult summer last year, there were some areas of deferred maintenance, some areas in the fairway that were dirt patches that had no grass in them. There were bunkers that were, well, Ben will tell you about the bunker, you know, that was not something I think that the Kemper folks enjoyed too much. You know, bunkers that were falling apart, drainage that needed to be done, more than anything, mowing that needed to be done, just simple, basic mowing. The, that led to sort of a difficult start, you know, the Kemper folks deserve, I think, our, the thanks and gratitude to the Township for jumping in front of a fire hose there. There was, there was a lot of work to be done in a very short period of time to meet the ambitious goals that the Township had laid out in terms of getting the golf course open and getting residents and golfers out there. Not only did Kemper have to handle all this maintenance, and we think they did a wonderful job with that at the outset of the year and as we went through the season, they also had to put an entire new team in place. So, in the beginning of the season, again, there was a lot of uncertainty, would we be able to pull this off, was this something that would come together? You know, they've hired a wonderful staff, I've been very pleased with the superintendent, with General Manager who's here with us this evening. As the season progressed, we got into May, we went from May into June, the condition of the golf course improved, and as we went through the summer months, the play at the golf course was really exceptional. I think to date, I think we're in the, we're 22, 21,000 rounds, so on an annualized basis, about, we would have done about 25,000 rounds this year, which is a huge number. I told the mayor at the beginning of the season that anything north of 18,000 rounds would be a good year, you know, just in general, not in our shortened season. So the fact that we're able to do sort of an annualized basis would have been equal to 25,000 rounds is, that's a grand slam, that is as good as it can possibly get. To give you a sense of kind of how busy the golf course was, there were weekends where they would do 600 rounds on a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So what does that look like? Well, you have a foursome every 10 minutes teeing off, you do 24 groups an hour. So to do, to do 200 rounds in a day, you are basically packed from 6:00, 7:00 in the morning, all the way to 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. So that is really impressive. In fact, there were several times when Chris and I were meeting, and we looked at the tee sheet, and there wasn't a single spot on the tee sheet from 7:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. I think that's a testament to just what an incredible asset the Township acquired. And we talked a little about the history when I was here earlier in the year, about what a special sort of Golden Age golf course this is from the 20s, and, you know, the only, really the only public Seth Rainer Golf Course in America, just a tremendous asset for the Township. But beyond simply the golf aspect of it, you know, there have been other ways that the Rock Spring has been utilized by the community. Perhaps no, no more so than the C.J. Morgan Memorial Golf Outing, raised, I think, $50,000 for, for charity. Really just a tremendous place for the community to come together. Kemper did a nice job over the summer, they also hosted a seminar for charities in the area, in particular, West Orange, to come together to learn about how to throw luncheons and how to throw golf outings, so that they could use the Rock Spring course to raise money for their charities. Also, you know, had a 5K on the golf course, I think we'll see more of that as we get into next year and have a little bit more lead time for some of these events. Really, really fantastic. So again, what are sort of the next steps in the process? Well, after we've sort of just put this year to bed, you know, we're really still playing, and there are a couple of crazy people out there today, a little crazier than I am, we're working on trying to get the team together to be able to interact with the public and with the Township in a meaningful way. So, we're looking to hire a golf course architect, someone who will be able to kind of advise us as to next steps, you know, on the golf course side, and also kind of what it would, what the different uses that are proposed for the golf course would do to affect the course. So I think the, the goal there is to, you know, because of the success of the course this year, and just seeing the tremendous demand in the community, if we can, we'd like to find a way to carve off a piece of the property but still retain 18 holes for use by the public, because obviously the demand is there and then some. So we're trying to find a way to balance, you know, the success of this historic golf course with the needs of the community. And so that's, that's sort of where we are at the process. I think we've just gotten our feet underneath this, sort of looking at the first year coming to a close. With that, I'll introduce Ben Blake from Kemper Sports.
Thank you, Dave. I'm not exactly, David said everything I was going to say, but I think that the other thing I'd like to add is that the, from our perspective and just the whole golf course, that the, the mayor and the staff have been just great to work with and very helpful, and it's been a true team effort. I mean, I was thinking about, we were here, what, seven or eight months ago, doesn't seem that long, and, you know, we had a golf course with no employees, it was a private country club for many years, that we're going to turn public, and, you know, all the challenges that go with that, and Chris Parker, our General Manager, really stepped up and hired everybody, you know, we got all the vendors, we got all the merchandise and food and beverage, et cetera, and it was, it was quite a undertaking for the first couple of months and continues to be, but it was, it's really been very positive, as David says, and the community has, has really responded to it, and we're looking forward to next year, because now we can actually plan and do some things that we really couldn't do then. Give you an example, we said we played about 21,000 rounds, we of course take customers' names and data, and we have almost 8,000 emails and customer information, individual information packages that we'll now be able to use for marketing purposes and communication purposes, and we're really excited about that. If you recall, we really couldn't book outings, outings tend to book six to eight months in advance, so this year was pretty much a bust, we did have six, but we've already booked seven for next year already, and here it is, only in November. And, so we really now will be in a position to plan and market and do sales for next year. We had some interest in membership, not as much as we thought, but we're now reevaluating, given how busy it is, what we're going to do on the membership side, and act accordingly depending on demand. So, it's been a great first year, and we really now feel like we're ready to tackle next year and expect things to continue to improve, especially the golf course, you know, we really didn't have a chance to get it in the condition we wanted it going into the winter. So this year, we do, you know, we've added equipment, we've done all the things we needed to do to really get off to the, to good start the first year, and so we're looking forward to it, and again, I just can't thank enough the team and the staff and everybody with the Township that's helped, helped get this open and helped us, you know, when we had problems. Happy to answer any questions.
No, thank you, sir. Thank you for being, first of all, my apologies to my council colleagues, the administration, and the members of the community for being late, I had a late meeting in Trenton today, so I apologize for my lateness. Yes, my council colleagues have any questions?
Could Mr. Parker just be introduced?
No, I didn't. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Parker, can you give us your title and your signpost?
I think they've done this already, but, good evening, my name's Chris Parker, I am the General Manager at Rock Spring Golf Club, and much to what David and Ben have said, we had a really good first year, a lot of challenges, a lot of support from the town, place has been well received from the community, a lot of meetings with people, a lot of sitting down and talking and trying to get through things that we need to improve on, and there's areas where we're always looking to improve. So, we're optimistic on the next year, and we are feeling good about what we've done this year. Much like David said, to be able to get to a point of where, with the short season, coming in last minute, not really having the staff in place to do 21,000-plus rounds in a short period of time is unheard of, it's a fantastic win for you guys, and we're happy to be here to help you with it. So, that's my piece, I hope everybody's happy.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, didn't know that you had to introduce us, so I apologize for that. Councilwoman Castellina?
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in and for giving us that report. Mr. Blake, I just want to, I just have to give kudos out to Mr. Parker, he's been instrumental this summer, I know he's, he's assisted me with a lot of my questions and helped support the neighborhood meetings that we had up there, and we really appreciate that, all that, that team building. And I want, I just want to, just get a few questions about, like, the food service portion of it. So what could we expect over the winter months? Will the restaurant be open, will there be parties being booked? If, you know, I want to go to dinner there on a Thursday night, will, will you be open? So those kind of things, what are we to expect for this winter?
Yeah, you know, one of the biggest challenges of Rock Spring is the size of the clubhouse and, and, you know, the upkeep, et cetera, and we are still, we never had a plan to have a full-service dining capability there, certainly we want to see what happens this year. And this year, this winter, we will not have, it will not be open, because that was not our original plan. We are working with the Township and, and trying to figure out what we're going to do with the F&amp;B, even to the point of considering leasing out the clubhouse to bring a restaurateur in, it's not really what we do per se. You know, the original plan was to have the food and beverage support the golf only and not get into the, the à la carte dining business. We, we do lease out the banquet facilities, anybody who wants to come in and use it, you know, we do that, but we, we, we never had the plan and didn't really want to have a full-blown F&amp;B operation until, quite frankly, it's determined where this whole thing is going. And so the nature that it was sort of a two-year deal had an impact on what our long-term plans were for food and beverage.
And I assume anything that you do plan, for example, you will be closed for dinner during the winter, that'll be posted on the website, so folks know that you won't be available with that.
People want to book special things, clearly.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, I mean, if someone wants to book any type of outing, we, special events, holiday parties, we're entertaining all that stuff, I'm meeting with people and, you know, getting contracts out, and if, if we can agree to terms, then we'll host your party, absolutely.
Okay, great, so just the à la carte part, portion of it.
No à la carte.
And just one other note, I'm glad to hear that the 18-hole golf course is working out, because I know, just from talking to folks that have been coming near and far to visit the course, they're coming because of 18 holes, so I'm glad that seems to be working, and hopefully we can make that a permanent solution for us, with determining our other needs, so, thank, thank you very much, and that's all I have for tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mathieu Brown?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for the update and status, I have to say, being newly elected, this was one of the most daunting votes that was asked for me, of me, after being sworn in for just less than 16 days, it was a huge challenge, but I'm happy to hear that there has been such success. I work in Trenton, and I, one of the gentlemen who owns the deli in one of the buildings that we are housed in actually came all the way from Trenton, yeah. Oh, because I told him, he's an avid golfer, and I have to echo what my council colleagues said, with respect to the 18 holes, that was the first question that was asked, and I do hear that from neighbors and avid golfers, that 18 holes is a preference, particularly for the conditions that the golf course is in, so thank you for all your efforts. I do have a question with respect to, you know, as always, keeping a focus on community for me is important, so with respect to just the ballpark figure, total number of employees, and of that total number of employees, how many are West Orange, what's the percentage of West Orange residents that are hired? And if there is not a large percentage, can we talk about making that a focus as well? You know, whether it be our high school seniors for caddies, or our senior citizens who are retired, looking to, you know, greet, but I think it's important to, you know, that would certainly make that more of a buy-in to our residents, right, that we have that. So, if you could, Mr., Chris?
Yeah, I can answer that question. We have a total, in season, we had a total of 84 employees, that's grounds, crew, housekeeping, food and beverage operation, golf shop, bag drop, carts, the whole operation. We employ quite a few West Orange high school seniors and juniors, actually that are returning, that will be returning in the spring, so if they had to put a percentage on it, 20 to 25 percent, which, we had a lot of influx for kids that were coming in and they were transitioning into college, they needed a summertime job, a lot of first-time jobs for some of the people that come, so, if that, I'm always welcome to interview and talk to anyone in the town that wants to pursue a position there, we will gladly support those within the community, we want to be good stewards of the community, so we're always ready to do that.
Happy to hear that, thank you. And I will also echo the sentiments of, looking forward to the potential leasing of the clubhouse for a restaurateur, I mean, that, that would just, I'm a foodie and I love to eat out, I would love to, and I have been to your establishment for meetings.
You and I are going to get along.
So, I, I, I'm excited to hear what those conversations, the development of those conversations will be, I think it will be, you know, phenomenal for, for, for both the golf course and our town, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
So I don't have a question, but just some comments, and mine was a little bit of a different take than my colleague, because I was going to say, thank you for hiring West Orange people, just the few, the meetings and the events that I have been there, I'm recognizing people there, but the 8,000 contacts that Ben just mentioned, those people that I've introduced myself are from all over.
Yeah.
New York, really, all over coming in, so as far as marketing and putting West Orange on the map, I really do appreciate that, and I look forward to looking at this plan and whatever we carve off and whatever, whatever we're able to do up there, I look forward to working on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Krokovia?
Thank you, Council President. I assume that you have the benefit of the October financials, that maybe you could tell us a little bit about both on a monthly basis and then as a year-to-date?
Yeah. Through October, the golf course will do about, has done about $1,007,000, and so you all get paid on a percentage of rent, and that's actually going to be higher than we forecast, so the Township's going to get more rent than you, you expected. We're now working through all the expense side, and, you know, those are the numbers I'd rather have John share with you, just because they're not final yet, and, but the golf course will be profitable, and we'll be able to both pay rent as well as, you know, add some other funds to the capital side, because there's quite a bit of capital work to be done. One of the challenges out there is, you know, bunkers and some other things that we inherited were, had spent a number of years in neglect, and it's something that we're going to have to address, but the good news is, is now it looks like we've got, we've got a viable business out there that can support additional improvements and, and, you know, it's, it's like almost having a Frank Lloyd Wright house in your community. I mean, Seth Rainer Golf Course is really a historic facility that has gotten a lot of recognition, especially from, you know, diehard golfers, and so it's something that's very special out there, and, and something that's worth spending some money on to make it even nicer, so that's, that's our goal as well.
So the $1.7 million, that's total revenues?
Yes.
How did the, the food and beverage numbers come in? Because at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the process, we weren't, you weren't looking to do a lot of there, but it picked up in September.
About, that'll do about a little bit more than $250,000, but food and beverage actually lost money. It's not uncommon, I mean, a couple of things have happened in golf, first of all, people now, as a pattern tends to be, they come and they play and they leave, the days of staying at the club and drinking and DWI, all of that is a thing of the past. And so, that's why food and beverage has gotten to be such a challenge at these facilities, you really have to drive the outing business and the banquet business to make it work. And the fact that we didn't really take over until May 1st, that whole piece of the business was non-existent this year. So, you know, you have to staff as if it's going to be busy, but it's a real challenge at golf courses, trying to have that, the right mix, and so it lost some money, and it's something that we're addressing, and it's why we're open to bringing in a restaurateur or finding any kind of solution that works. We're not, you know, as far as we're concerned, we're completely open to that, and it's good for everybody, including the customers.
Mr. Kronheim mentioned earlier in the, in your presentation that, that you're recommending, or perhaps the administration has already agreed, to hire an architect?
We're currently interviewing.
Of course, architect.
Yeah.
You're interviewing architects?
Interviewing architects, yeah.
Okay. And is that related to what Mr. Black was saying about the capital improvements that need to be done?
I, I don't think they're directly related, I think we're, again, we're looking to put together the best possible team to be able to evaluate the options for the long-term of the property. Mr. Blake was referring more to sort of short-term capital things that cart paths or bunkers, you know, things of that nature that have a shorter lifespan.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about the numbers? Because I'm, I'm very pleased to hear that, that the revenues, and I guess the, the net operating came up better than was projected, but if we've got, for hiring an architect and we're doing capital projects, maybe that's going to eat up a lot of whatever profit, so I'm just curious as to what the numbers look like at this point?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, it's better categorized, as we're in the planning phase, we're trying to figure out what is the long-term game plan and get in a position where we can make recommendations, and so this is really the first inning of that. And as David said, you know, we have short-term needs, we've got to make sure that the existing bunkers are in decent shape for the existing golfers, but we're not going to spend money, any long-term money on something like that until there's a plan in place. And I think that it will be a plan that has, you know, multiple sort of options, so that, so that everybody's confident that we've looked at all the various options and have come up with the best, best solution. It's a combination of financial, the golf course, CapEx, all those things, but we're just getting started.
Okay. And, and it sounds like that you, the professionals, are at least somewhat optimistic that there are options to keep an 18-hole course and still carve out, as the mayor had talked about earlier in the process, carve out some of the property?
It's, yes, it's very preliminary at this stage, but we, we're certainly looking at that as a definite option and are optimistic that there may be a way to figure out how to do that. What exactly it's going to look like is a lot yet to be determined, but we'll also look at other options, so that everybody's knows that we've looked at every option possible, and it'll be completely transparent, and it's really just a process as much as anything.
Okay. I, I know at the, at the beginning of this process, there was, there was some questions about whether the, I guess it's, is it three or four holes that are on this other side of Walker Road?
Two holes, yeah.
Two holes, I'm sorry, one out, one back, that that was going, that was not going to be part of any sort of development, is that, has that changed at all? Is there any discussion about putting development up on that high part of the ridge? Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate your information.
Thank you, Councilman. I have questions, I have two questions. When, when will lessons be available? Because, you know, I get complaints, particularly from my wife, I want to learn how to play golf, I want to make use of our great facilities.
Right now.
So, good. Okay. Now, the real important question, this is the real question. Have you done, or what I'd like you to do, is have you done an expense analysis, a performance sheet, a performer with key performance indicators of our facility compared to a light facility that you do across the country?
We will definitely do that, at the end, end of the year, we want to get the 12-month, or it's going to be partial year, but absolutely, we do that as a, as a common practice for us internally, and happy to share that, and we've got a lot of data, because we have a lot of comps of similar type properties, so that will be definitely deliverable, probably, you know, right after the first of the year.
Because the reason why I'd like to know that, it's like looking at light properties and the, you know, is to see what you're forecasting, to see how it's going to roll forward.
Yeah.
And that's what I really saw. Do you have an idea of when you'll be getting something of that nature to the Town Council?
Let's, I would say, well, the year-end numbers, towards the end of January, early February, something like that, we, the analysis is easy to do, it's just really a matter of when are we going to close our books here? And so usually we'll close them a couple of weeks after, so let's call it mid-January, it is year-end, as long as it, they're not, you know, official audit of numbers, they'll be close enough, so we'll have something to you shortly thereafter.
And from your professional background, all of you here, do you see a trending, based upon the national experience, do you see a trending of potential shortfalls, potential increases, decreases in the use of a facility as Rock Spring?
No, well, it's interesting, so, we run, you know, golf courses all over the United States, over 130 golf courses, and what we are seeing is that the high-quality signature-type courses like a Rock Spring are by far doing the best. It's a little counterintuitive, but what's happened in the industry is, the occasional golfer has sort of dropped out, and so the courses, sort of the entry-level courses that they were playing, it tend to be struggling the most. The highly dedicated avid golfers continue to play, they're not playing as much, but they tend to be gravitating towards the higher-quality properties, both in terms of design, conditioning, experience. And, and price is not necessarily the And, and price is not necessarily the driver, the decision of why they're playing and where they're playing. So quite frankly, Rock Spring is perfectly positioned to, to tap that market and especially a market like this. And we have similar-type courses in Chicago and some other big cities that are, that aren't showing any signs of any downturn.
Okay. Am I, oh, did you want to add something? Sorry, no, no.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, very quickly. I, I completely agree with Ben. I think the, I think the future is actually probably brighter than, than what we did this year. And I think the Kemper folks are forecasting an increase in rounds for next year. And I think, you know, the people in the council, you've all, you've all expressed the, the sentiment that you heard people coming from a great distance to be here. And that, that's absolutely true. I, I think that the township shouldn't underestimate the magnetism of this property for people moving to West Orange. This is, this is a quality-of-life amenity for people who are looking to move out of the city or looking to move somewhere in New Jersey. This is a reason to move to West Orange. You know, I think that's, I think the golf course is very, very well-positioned to be a tremendous asset for the town and also, again, a magnet.
And my last question is, from your professional points of view, how is the turf and the facility holding up so far?
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, we had some certain, we really had obvious challenges when we got into the season. I've been very pleased with, with Brandon, our new superintendent. I think he's done a wonderful job. The, you know, the arc as we went through the season was one where we had some real deferred maintenance issues. And I actually didn't think Brandon maybe would address some of these because they required drainage, they required things that were more permanent solutions. But much to his credit and to Kemper's credit, they've actually tackled some of those problems, taking out areas of turf that had gotten, they were muddy or there wasn't great grass, stripping the sod off, putting saw, putting sand in to fill it to make it drain. So I, I think the, you know, I think the conditioning is right where it needs to be for a first-class daily fee course.
There's one thing. Because it was a country club, they didn't have, in today's world, it's very, it's normal practice to have cart path all the way around the golf course. But at a country club that tends to have caddies, they tend to have them just from the green to the next tee. And that's the case at Rock Spring. Which means that if it rains and this golf course, for whatever reason, tends to be wet, we, we can't let golf carts out. This year, we had over 2,600 rounds that had to cancel because we don't have wall-to-wall, what we call wall-to-wall cart paths, which represents about $200,000. So one of the things we will definitely be exploring is cart paths because they clearly can pay for themselves very quickly in terms of lost rounds. And so when we look at capital improvements, we try to tie them directly to increased revenues so that they can be justified from a, from an investment standpoint. And that would be one thing in this, in this plan that will definitely be addressed because it's, it's one of the things that came up this year. And we do a lot of surveying with our customers. We've had a lot of survey results, and there's two things. The bunkers and the golf course is wet, and when it gets wet, they can't play. So, you know, that's normal, and that's was expected, and it's quite frankly, a nice problem to have because golf course has been busy.
True. Well, we thank you on behalf of the Township Council. We thank you for taking care of our great asset, and we look forward to seeing you again and look forward to your reporting. And please keep us in the loop of things, you know, affecting or things that you may need that need to be addressed that are not being addressed. So I thank you on behalf of my council colleagues for being here tonight, and we look forward to hearing from you again. Thank you.
Council President, I just want to say...
Yes, Mr. Saris.
I just want to say, from the administration's perspective, we really appreciate everything you guys have done. Great guidance for us. I mean, we never ran a golf course before, and you guys gave us the pluses and the minuses. You didn't just come in and say, "This is what you have to do." You would say, "This is a plus." And I really appreciate everything you guys did. You really did a great job for us. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Saris. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Moving right along, Mr. Saris and the administration, updates on redevelopment, please.
Wait, you have, you have somebody else coming up?
I was going to ask Mr. Parker just to plug their gift cards for the season, being that you want me to do it all?
I promise you, she's not on payroll.
Thank you. Redevelopment, Mr. Saris.
Redevelopment. There are over 200 units rented now. I'm not sure exactly the number because I wasn't able to talk exactly to them, but they did, it was over 200 units apparently rented. Phase two, I believe, was approved by the planning board at the November meeting. So phase two has been approved, and we have had...
Can you speak into the microphone? I'm sorry, Mr. Saris.
I'm sorry. Phase two has been approved by the planning board, and they're going to make some adjustments to phase two as to what they want to do. So we're looking forward to see what that's going to be.
Okay. My colleagues, any questions for administration on redevelopment? Yes, Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Just as always, with respect to the business interests at Edison, Ross, anything?
Still hasn't, still has not told me anything about who he's, who he's looking at and what he's going to do with the commercial space.
Do you know if there's a market plan out there? I mean, obviously, it's in their interest.
If there is, he didn't, he hasn't told me that. So I'm not...
No.
I would think he has one, but he...
I would think he has one, too. I just, I'm wondering what the, what the issue would be. What exactly is...
He has not given me a market plan at all.
Anything else?
No.
Councilwoman Castellino?
No, I just want to make the comment, not that they've shared anything with me, but, you know, I've seen down in Harrison how a few buildings, before they opened up the commercial space, you know, quite a few buildings were built before they even, and Mr. Gross could attest to this, he lives down there. So in regards to the commercial spaces being filled, so I'm going to remain optimistic that once phase two gets rolling, they'll be starting to work on that space.
Yeah, they're not going to accept, they're, they're going to hold out for the kind of rents that, that they're looking for with, with the kind of demands you're seeing with the residential. There is some critical point under which, you know, the, if you build it, they will come. If you, if you have, if you have residential density of a certain, at a certain level, they will start getting the interest of the type of, of retail that, that they want or that can afford to pay the rents. So, and just as your example, they just finally rented and opened up the last space down, in the downtown in Harrison that's been vacant now, brand-new space, it's been vacant now for four years. So they held out a long time to get the clients that they wanted there. So I don't think it's unusual what's happening here. Same thing, we, you know, it was a little different in South Orange because of the focus was on, was on a retail grocery market, and it was built around that. Not that they can't do that here, but that's not what this project was built around. So it's a little different situation.
Council President, the exact same thing is true down at the Performing Arts Center in Newark. They have a huge amount of commercial space that's vacant, has been for some time now, but once those residences fill up, I think there'll, there'll be something there. So it's common.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Well, so the good news is that the residents that are there are very happy. So even without the retail there, they have opened their lounge or café up to the Arts Council, and the Arts Council had an exhibit there a week ago. And people are downsizing, and just as we just heard, people coming in from all over. I've met people from Vermont, New York again, people downsizing from West Caldwell, South Orange, all, you know, just coming in. Beautiful environment.
Councilman? Yes, Councilman?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Saris, do you have any indication what the timetable is for phase two? As you know, it's real far behind, or at least it has been. Do you have any timetable when they're going to break ground or anything like that?
No, not yet.
Do you have any indication that they've secured construction financing?
I'm assuming they did. I, we didn't ask that question. But I mean, if they just got their, their process, you know, the whole plan has been approved, my guess is that they're in shape to do what they need to do. But I didn't, I don't know that for a fact. I didn't ask them that question.
Okay. Well, next time you talk to Mr. Diaz or whomever, could you find out those two, those two situations, what their timetable is? I, I know they gave us a very detailed timetable at the time that they were looking for approval from the council. That's, I think, pretty much in the trash can now. So I'd like to maybe even get a revised timetable at this point.
Yes, I'll, I'll speak to him about that.
Okay. And then also whether they have construction financing?
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
So Council President, that didn't come up at the planning board, and it was approved. The 2A of the redevelopment is, or phase 2A, is 20 units on the south side toward the back of Babcock. So these are 20 called stacked townhomes. That's what was approved. And then phase 2B will be where the Barton Press site was. That's been excavated, and that will be additional units. We haven't seen that plan. But, you know, at the planning board, we don't, we didn't talk about construction...
Right.
...timetables.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Thank, before I move on to council liaisons, I just want to thank the members of the scouting community and their leaders for being here tonight to see democracy of our republic in workings. And I hope you get a great experience here tonight. We're here to help you, here to help you learn about democracy and how it works the right way, whether you think it's the wrong way. But we appreciate the council, my council colleagues and I. I know I can, on behalf of all of them, thank you for being here tonight. And always feel free to reach out to us. We're here. We represent you, and we're here to help you whatever you need within our, with our control. But I just want to thank you and your leaders for being here tonight. Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
So the reason the Scouts are here, we appreciate you being here, and you can be here, you know, of course, anybody working on any merit badge that you need to, is because tonight originally was the schedule for our extra-mile proclamation to recognize our volunteers. That was shifted to November 26th, so we invite you back on November 26th. We're an invitation for the, it's a national recognition for extra-mile volunteer organizations as yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. Council liaison, Councilwoman Castellina, we'll start with you this week.
Sure. And thank you to the Scouts. They've been down at the farmer's market pretty much almost every time I've been down there, helping out, helping to set up. So we thank you all for your service to the community, doing a great job this year for us. I'm sure the Stacy Reese and company at the farmer's market appreciates all your support and help that you've been giving them each, each week. Lot to celebrate this next month with the holiday seasons coming. Get ready for them on Small Business Saturday, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Please remember your small businesses here in the community. The township will participate with the American Express promo to support all local businesses. Or anytime you use your American Express card, any one of our local businesses, you will get double points. So please come out, not just support that Saturday, but always to our downtown stores and all throughout the township as well. Santa Claus will be coming through the township on December 1st. The Recreation Department will be sponsoring this event again. And we're Santa, with the help of our wonderful firefighters and our fire department, will be traveling through the community and be stopping by our school. So look up on the township website for those dates and times and come out and say hi to Santa. Ms. Brill will be up to talk about our festivities on December 7th downtown with Breakfast with Santa and all the other holiday events that evening. So we look forward to hearing her report. And I want to wish all the veterans out there, and many are here tonight, Happy Veterans Day, and thank you for your service to our community. I did not get to attend the township service yesterday, however, I was fortunate enough to be able to visit the Bethany Church on Sunday. They had a beautiful, a beautiful service honoring our veterans in the township, so I wanted to thank them for that as well. And I just want to give a shout-out. I appreciate all the services of Laura Van Dyke and Dorothy Saunders. Today, they met with Coach Stefan Zekella, who handles our Mountaineer Mentors. And we have a lot of new events coming out with programming through our senior services in, in partnership with our high, West Orange High School. So we look forward to those new programs they're working on.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Councilwoman Matu Brown?
In light of the time and the packed agenda I will pass for this evening, except to say Happy Veterans Day. We did have a wonderful event honoring the veterans yesterday, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
All right, I just have a couple of invitations here from the West Orange Arts Council. Holiday Boutique starts on December 7th and 8th and December 14th and 15th. These are handmade items at the West Orange Arts Center, 551 Valley Road. Visit westorangearts.org for more information. Everyone is invited to the Chamber of Commerce Annual Thanksgiving Luncheon on November 27th from noon to 2:00. That's at the Mayfair Farms. Visit westorangechamber.com. Cutting it short, Friends of Edison, One Book One Town, Joe Fagan presented last Sunday. The next presentation will be on December 15th at the Edison Labs. So we invite everyone to that to hear Lenny McGrath, DeGraff, who is the archivist for the labs. And Planning Board has been focusing on the updating the master plan. We meet again, we won't meet again until December 4th. And the West Orange Environmental Commission will be recognized at the League of Municipalities Convention for lots of things.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kocovia?
Thank you, Council President. Just two quick things. This Saturday is the Men Who Cook With A Purpose fundraiser. Everybody here is invited. It's down at the Neo Fellowship, NEA Fellowship Baptist Church at 174 South Valley Road, West Orange. If anybody wants to cook, if anybody who doesn't know what a Men Who Cook is, essentially men cook dishes and you get serving sizes, you pay ticket, you buy tickets and you get little serving sizes of anywhere up to 30 to 50 different dishes. And our tweak is that if you bring your friends, we have voting of what the best dishes are. And so if you really want to win one of the plaques, you bring as many people as you can to vote for you. It's this Saturday from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Tickets are $30. Kids have access to a free menu and also supervision and activities. If you need more information, you can go to the church's website, which is neophellowshipbc.com/mwc for more information. And the council has graciously agreed to be one of the many sponsors of the event, so we're hoping to see some of you there. Just as an update, also, I'm liaison for the Open Space and Recreation Committee. The committee actually sent a letter to the council, a rather lengthy letter to the council, trying to address many of the issues that have been raised in the last two or three council meetings about the proposed open space purchase of some property on Ridge Road off of Mount Pleasant Avenue. I'm not sure where we take it from here because at the last meeting, the, at the culmination of the, the council trying to get the administration to move forward on due diligence to try to purchase the properties, we found out that state law under our municipal charter grants the mayor all the power to buy and sell property in town. And the mayor has said that he is not going to move forward on this at, at this time. But I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Just one, coming up tomorrow is our West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting, 7:30 at the Essex County Turtle Bag Zoo. It's open to the public. We meet, we talk about pedestrian issues, items that are coming up, grant opportunities that, that we are working on in this coming year, different projects. And we'd like the general public to be there. We get a good turnout every so often. But I do want to say tomorrow also, at the same time, part of our members will be at Gregory School with Sangita and Sunil Budlani presenting the Gregory School with an award for being the most productive in fundraising for the Run for Nikhil this past year. So a big shout-out to the Gregory School community, to the Gregory School students and their parents and their teachers for really putting and instilling in the students the need to always support organizations and efforts that promote safety and, and community awareness. So a big shout-out to Gregory School. Also, coming up on Saturday at the Armory. Now, you do know in West Orange, there is the Armory that at one time was the Essex Calvary. And at this time on Saturday at 1:00, they will have a plaque unveiling to commemorate the establishment of the Armory, and the township historian can correct me if I'm wrong. And the public is invited. It's, it's a great, beautiful facility. It's not only a place where the soccer palace is, the indoor soccer, but inside is memorabilia from the First World War, the Second World War. from the First World War, the Second World War. And it's maintained by active members of the units who came out of there from the National Guard. So if you ever want, it's, it's open to the public. It's a beautiful facility and it's a history of the West Orange community and what we did. Big shout out to Downtown Alliance, all the great things. You see the banners are going up for the holiday all over town. A big shout out to the farmer's market in cooperation with the Downtown Alliance. And another big shout out to David Drill and his family for allowing the use of their property, their parking lot to host the West Orange Farmer's Market. So we thank Stacy and her husband Ron for doing such a great job, for bringing the community together and have people recognize a downtown environment. So we look forward to, it ends on the 23rd of November and we look forward to next year. We look forward to the holiday events, the holiday open house, breakfast with Santa, the tree lighting. Come on downtown, it's a great place. Councilwoman Castellino mentioned about, you know, Small Business Saturday sponsored by American Express. American Express spends millions of dollars a year promoting this across the country. And they've monitored a sales increase and believe me, there were big spikes in small businesses, particularly on Main Streets like ours. So please take advantage of this. Please show our merchants on Main Street, help them build, help them get along and help them, you know, make our Main Street a strong, you know, environment. And also, a big shout out to Nicholas Anthony's for a fantastic job they're doing, has a new restaurant down on Main Street. It's fantastic. The food is wonderful. It's, it's, it's a moderately priced restaurant, great service, great atmosphere. I think they're going to get a big write-up and from our Downtown Alliance and from our food people. So really show our merchants on Main Street that you really love them. Go out and say, you know, thank you, we're going to enjoy our meal. And to the point of Councilwoman Mathieu Brown's comment about our Veterans Day, it was good to see, you know, the council there and administration members and to really see the community come out and thank our veterans. Whether, you know, whether you were a veteran or family members were veterans, your brothers or sisters, it's always good to never forget the sacrifices that they made, the time spent away from their families. And I have great respect for the veterans, many who are members of our police and fire department, many of them that I've known since they're four years old and grew up with my kids, that I have great respect for them and thank them for guaranteeing the democracy of this republic has to offer. And also was great seeing yesterday on Veterans Day, how we thank those that gave the ultimate sacrifice, who gave of their lives to guarantee all of you, particularly you young folks today, the privilege of enjoying your democracy in this great republic of ours. And that, that point, I'd like to, oh, Councilwoman McCartney.
I wanted to also commend and congratulate Jen Tunncliff and Gary Rothstein for their election to the Board of Education. And I appreciated this comment in the editorial in the Chronicle that said West Orange was lucky to have three excellent candidates running, unfortunately only two open seats. So we wish them well and work closely with the Board of Ed on many events. And to commend Lieutenant Richie McDonald, I know he's out there somewhere, Lieutenant Tito John and Sergeant Rory Kearns. So congratulations on your recent promotions. Oh, from last time, I know Bobby's out there.
Bobby Kermit. Okay. With that, does anybody have anything else? I close the conference agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26th, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4th, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino.
Present.
Councilman Kukovia.
Present.
Councilwoman Mathieu Brown.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Corino.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Good evening to my council colleagues. Good evening, the residents of West Orange here in council chambers and at home watching us on, on television. Before I open public comment, I will ask that remember decorum in council chambers. This is a public forum. Please remember your decorum and the way you speak and what you say. Okay? When you come up, when you come up, please speak directly into the microphone, clearly state your name, spell it possibly for the township clerk to edit to her records and your address. If you're wishing to be heard by the township council, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Anyone wishing to speak to the council? Yes?
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just go before we get all that?
Sure.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mrs. Brill, our executive director of the Downtown Alliance.
I thought you were going to call me when it was your report. Hi, so I'm Megan Brill, Executive Director of Downtown Alliance. I have three things to talk about. Michelle had mentioned Small Business Saturday. I guess for the last five or six years, we've compounded on American Express's celebration of small businesses and shopping locally. We will have goodies and balloons and pens and all kinds of stuff in all of our participating businesses downtown on November 30th. We also suggest that you watch Facebook, which is the absolute best place to get up to minute, up to the second information about what's going on in all of our businesses in downtown and throughout the township. And the website, Downtown West Orange Alliance website and the township website will list a list of everything that's going on. As best as we know it, things are forever being added to the unwieldy list of activities that are going to happen on that day. We also are rolling out a new program involving resident Sarah Zorns. I didn't tell Sarah I was going to talk about her tonight. Sarah is a six-month resident of West Orange. She comes to us with her husband and their dog, Rowdy, from Brooklyn. And she is a restaurant critic. She's not currently writing for anyone right now. And I thought that, you know, one of the things that we do really, really well downtown is feed people. And we have some great restaurants. And we hired Sarah to go out, eat as much as she can, she's a little thing. And she will be traveling the businesses along the corridor, eating and then writing about them. And we will post them on our website, on the township website. And we're hoping that the Chronicle, where did we have to go? And Tap will cover it and The Patch as well. So she did her first review and, and it's really fabulous. She talks about the, the food, the chef, the utensils, the decor, everything soup to nuts that you would want to know about a restaurant before you walk in the door. So we're going to just keep her going. Hopefully she'll do two a month. But we're excited, she's excited about it. And, and so that's like a new initiative that just kind of popped up when we saw that, you know, she wanted to help with us, help us, work with us. She's usually at the market on Saturday as well. And, and so we're excited about that, you know, little program. The other thing that we have, which is our last biggest event of the year is the Holiday Open House. We do breakfast with Santa, pictures with Santa, we have guided trolley rides and the, the library does stuff. So everything is going to be based out of Washington School this year. We've moved around a little bit, but Breakfast with Santa is a big event. We get almost 200 kids, so we added an extra hour to that. So it'll be, breakfast starts at 9:00 and goes to 12:00. And then starting at 10:00 o'clock is an arts and crafts bazaar. While you're waiting for the traditional guided trolley ride by the town council and the mayor, that will take you into Llewellyn Park and Historic Downtown. We added another trolley or jitney with Joe Fagan on it to talk about the Eagle Rock Hill climb and the Mary Williams marker. So from Washington School, we're going to go downtown towards Llewellyn Park and then up towards Eagle Rock Reservation. And there'll be 45-minute free guided tours that will be from Washington School. There's going to be pictures with Santa at the breakfast and then pictures with Santa throughout downtown. There's also going to be, which was wildly attended, was the stuffed animal workshop at the library. So it's kind of like a Build-A-Bear thing and it is free even though I told them they should charge because it's so popular, but it is still free. You have to reserve and they have the cutest reindeers and snowmen and stuffed animals that I want them all. So that will happen at two, between 2:00 and 3:00. The schedule is in a flyer, which I put together, I think there's enough for Karen, sorry, you guys don't get tired. And that will be posted, it's already on our website, it's going out through the school district. Also, on the other side of that flyer, that's not there now, is the tree lighting. So we have a culmination of, everything's happening downtown and then at 4:00, we encourage everyone to come over to Town Hall for the annual arrival of Santa on a fire truck at Town Hall. So that is on me. I think I covered everything. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Brill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on, Joe, do you want to make any comments real quickly on?
I have nothing to add, everything's already decided.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone wishing to speak to the township council? Yes, ma'am. Oh, it's Mrs. Kermit. Good evening, Mrs. Kermit. How are you? Good, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Jerry Kermit. I live at 326 St. Cloud Avenue in West Orange. I'm here because I'm supporting the police. Not just my sons, but all of them. I'm very, very upset the fact that the bean counters of this community have refused to see what the community will become if it doesn't grant the unborn the same benefits that the present police have. I mean, if you want cheaper taxes, go east. You don't have to stay here. But the community, our community, the, the quality of life in our community will suffer. The gentlemen and ladies that are now on the force are going to get older and they're going to retire and they're going to have to be replaced. And who's going to want a job where people shoot at them and they don't have any benefits? How is that fair? Would any of you take a job like that? I don't think so. I'm very, very disappointed in all of you that this hasn't been settled years ago when the contract first came up for renewal. They're not asking for a raise in pay. They've taken 0% for years and they're not being rewarded by helping the future police officers of this community and the quality of life to maintain itself. I'm very sorry that I had to come up here and say anything. I've tried to keep quiet for a long time about this, but I can't any longer. And I'm very, very upset. I understand that it's not just salaries, that the benefits go into the cost of per person. I understand that. But sometimes the bottom line doesn't actively support the quality. All right? No one's going to want a job or not disparage anybody in the future. But the people that will come to work for this community won't have their heart and soul in it like a lot of these guys and women do. Most of them grew up in this community. They're our children, not just my children, but they're our children. They've lived in this community. West Orange is unique topographically and ethnically, and they understand the community. But to not encourage the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts to want to help their own community and by the community not supporting them, it's shameful. And I think you all should be very, very ashamed of yourselves for not allowing this, for allowing this to go on for longer and for not correcting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kermit. Anyone else wishing to speak to the township council? Yes, sir.
Michael Cassidy, President, West Orange Superior Officers Association, 1 Carrier Street, West Orange, New Jersey. Tonight, make no doubt about it, this is not an easy task for you, but these two contracts set before you equate to you voting for a tax raise. That's what it is. It's, you have the opportunity, we've presented it, we want to make concessions, go back to the state health benefit plan, save $4 million to the taxpayers. We're willing to put that on the table, we've made that clear. These plans take on additional unfunded liabilities to the township and made people have to choose between themselves and the unborn. And unfortunately, for police and fire, we don't always get a second chance. There's things you respond to, and recently we just saw that happen to one of our first responders. And what happens in the future when that happens? They will be left with nothing, absolutely nothing. I can't believe that anybody wants that. I can't believe that that's what you're going to do. Unfortunately, the one contract that's before you, I don't know how they're doing it tonight. The leadership has decided to keep firemen in a burning building, the future hires that won't be able to get out. They're being left behind. We don't let, leave people on the battlefield. We take care of them. There's diseases, there's things that happen over a course of a career that don't rear their ugly head until later on. The New Jersey State Attorney General recently put in the police resiliency program. And one of the most traumatic times for a police officer is when they're faced with retirement. So make no doubt about it, if you vote yes for this, you lose the chance to save $4 million because the state health benefit plan is everybody or nobody. And you're voting for a tax raise. You're giving up the Chapter 78 savings and you're not benefiting from any savings. Just in the fire contract alone creates $8 to $10 million in additional unfunded liabilities in today's dollars. And you will not save one penny for 30 years. They'll all be dead by the time their savings. Nobody will see it. And you're leaving your first responders with nothing. You're leaving them with the promise that if something happens, they have nothing. Their family will not be taken care of. We are going to be the lowest paid police department if we accept this deal other than East Orange. And the most important part is that every other firefighter or police department can get into Chapter 78 benefits under Chapter 330 if, if they don't have benefits. Unfortunately, once you give up benefits, there's no way to get into Chapter 330. I hope you seriously consider this tonight, vote no, and send the town back to the bargaining table. Let them know you want real savings today, not 30 years today, when nobody's going to be around to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Cassidy. Anyone else wishing, yes, sir. Right here. You, sir, you had your hand up? Yes, sir, you. Thank you.
My name is Pat Hoggigan. I'm with the State President of the New Jersey State Policeman's Benevolent Association, 158 Main Street in Woodbridge. I'd like to first thank the members from literally throughout the state. I see people from as far away as Somerset County, members who took their own time to come and support our brothers and sisters in West Orange. Ironically, respectfully, $1.7 million in gross revenue from the golf course and you have trouble patting yourselves on the back over it. This union is coming here, giving you over $4 million. It's going to be, the projected savings are going to be increased because now the cost of the state health benefits has decreased, probably closer to $5 million. Next week, when you go to the League of Municipalities, find me, an elected official in this state, or find me an elected official in this entire country, regardless of the size of the town or the community, that is turning down over $4 million. And I'll come back here and I'll apologize at this microphone. It is stunning to me that $1.7 million in gross revenue is the greatest thing that ever happened to West Orange and you're turning away almost $5 million. What you need to do tonight, if you pass this, is the next motion needs to be the revolving door that needs to go on the front of the police department and the front of the fire department. Because the savings you think you're going to get is not going to be realized for 30 years, as Officer Cassidy said. The expenses you're going to incur are going to start the The expenses you're going to incur are going to start the day the new hires start, because your attrition rate is going to go through the roof. We have brothers and sisters here from Clifton. They're going to, I hope, get up and tell you the same thing they told you last time we were here. What is the cost of the revolving door? You're going to pay for officers in a great community like West Orange, and you're going to watch them leave to every other township in this county, in this state, that offers retirement health benefits. I find that the mayor suspiciously absent, again, like the last time we were here. I'm sure he's watching from somewhere, and there's a reason he's not here. Because the conflict of interest is that he's a healthcare broker. And the state health benefits, quite simply, doesn't pay a commission. And it doesn't pay any healthcare broker in this state to go to the state health benefits and join about 50%...50% of the state employees in this state. Join them in that program. It's not a bad program, but they don't pay a state...they don't pay a commission to brokers. So I find it ironic. I hope you look yourselves in the mirror, because when you read about this a few years from now, and I guarantee you will, if you pass this tonight, you'll be reading about the attrition rate and the incredible costs associated with that. I worked in a town that had that attrition rate until they fixed things. When you read about it, you own it. Every one of you here that votes yes tonight owns that attrition problem and owns a disrupted and disgraceful police agency. I just...I can't tell you...I can't implore you anymore. I represent almost 33,000 officers in this state. I know what's going to happen, just like they know. The only person that doesn't appear to know is your mayor. Vote no tonight. Go back to your mayor and ask him about the commissions he's getting with Fairfield Insurance. I'll say it on the microphone, in all the other towns he's working in. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Yes, sir.
My name is Derek Fogg. I'm the Vice President of Clifton PBA Local 36, 900 Clifton Avenue, Clifton, New Jersey. I'm a past resident of this town, past employee of this town. My mother is still a resident in this town. March area, February, when we were here the last time and I spoke to you, I gave you all kinds of numbers about what would happen to this city, what would happen to your police department, what's going to happen to your fire department, if you choose to sell out your unborn. I gave you all kinds of numbers that my department had lost something, we're around 17 employees, 17 new officers, have gone to other cities. This year alone, my department has lost 10 officers. 10. Okay? We're in month 11, and I guarantee you by the end of the year, I will lose another one. That is what you're headed to. Okay? That is what's going to happen if you sell out your unborn. West Orange will become a stepping stone city. You will be a stepping stone city in your fire department. You'll be a stepping stone city in your police department. I guarantee it. I am living that nightmare now. If you would like, I will give you the phone number of the councilwomen and men of your choosing that will explain to you exactly what has happened for what they did eight years ago. You need to vote no. You need to go back to the bargaining table, and you need to find this saving somewhere else. Because again, that savings 30 years from now is not going to help you now. And it is going to destroy this city, the residents of this city, the police department, and the fire department. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Yes, sir. You're right there, sir, with the glasses on in that row. Thank you, sir. Oh, Chris, I couldn't see him.
I have a bit of an allergy problem. Good evening, Council President Guarino and Council Members. I'm back. I told you I wasn't going away, and I meant it.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Chris Babinski, Shop Stewart, Teamsters Local 560, Communications Officers, West Orange Police Department. I stand here too, tonight, and I support my brother, police and firefighters that are here tonight, and I also support myself and my membership. I'd like to briefly just touch on some of the points that were raised here tonight. First, I just want to open and say I don't golf. I never did. But I do know a lot about bunkers, and I know a lot about assets. And right now, I'm in a deteriorating bunker. I'm tired, I'm beat up, I'm bloody, and I'm battered. But I'm still holding strong. And I'm here tonight to let all of you know, if you want to talk about bunkers and assets, look at the faces out here. Your first responders are the biggest asset ever that should be invested in. These are the men and women that bravely put their lives on the line every single day that'll rush into a burning building or that'll go into a domestic violence. And I'm the guy that has to ensure their safety and make sure they do their job safely and get home to their loved ones, like everybody wants to do. Knowledge is power. I will tell you that, and that I know. It's a biblical principle. When Adam and Eve ate from the tree of the knowledge of good and evil, their eyes were opened, meaning they came into a higher understanding of knowledge. These eyes are wide open. And they have given you the knowledge to exercise your fiduciary duty responsibly the way it should be done. And I want to echo the sentiments of the State President. Thank you, brother. Why, again, I'll say, are you refusing a $4 to $5 million savings? It does not make sense. Why are we having such a high turnout...turnaround rate? I said at last council meeting, I've stopped counting at 179 members, employees, that have come and gone through the greatest training facility in the world, the West Orange Police Department's Communication Center, for $20,000, $30,000 raises, because, again, and I'll say, the starting salary here is below federal poverty level. State tax, federal tax, union dues, SUI, SDI, uniform allowance. Live on it. My members are required to. They don't. They get trained, they get certified, and they go. To the brother that said, "Is the department suffering?" We are suffering it here now. It's starting here now. You have active police and firefighters that are looking to seek employment somewhere else because we are the lowest paid in Essex County. It's disgusting, and it's a disgrace, and it has to stop. The greatest gift of all, other than knowledge, I'll tell you this, is free will. Follow the path of the money. The sacrificial lamb of the West Orange Police Department's employees has been laid before you for years and has been bleeding green. Where's it going? Who's profiting from it? My membership wants to know, where's the mayor? Have you seen him? We haven't. Four weeks, we're still waiting on an answer for a contract. We still don't have a memorandum of agreement to bring back. Has any of the council people seen the mayor? He's not here either. We want to know. Why is that? Climbing your bunker. Because we're in the middle of a fight. And I'm tired, and it has to stop. Joe, it has to stop. Eight to 16 hours a day, I sit in a chair, and I listen to people at their worst. It's not easy. I just turned 54 years of age. Want to know what the biggest fear with me is? Retirement. I can go in a year. So I'm desirous of any housing that this golf course may have, because I may be interested. I fought foreclosure all four times, Joe, four. Four times.
Your time is up.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council. My name is Joe Savatieri. I'm the Delegate for the Montclair Police Department, 647 Bloomfield Avenue, Montclair. And just as important, I'm the Chairman for the Essex County PBA Conference. You look around this room, and I'm sure a lot of the faces in this room, you know them very well. They're your police and your fire department. It's not a job, ladies and gentlemen. I could tell you that. It's a way of life. It's not a job. These people will see more in a career than you can even phantom, whether you watch all the TV you want, what you hear or read. And as I say, it's a profession. They put their uniform on every day, they go out there, and they save lives. In short, all I want to say to you is that, to that fireman and firefighter, the flames are their enemy. To your police officer, the felon is their enemy. If you don't vote no for this, you all will become the enemy from within. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Chris Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Chris Jackson, West Orange PBA Local 25, President, 1 Cary Street. I want to thank all the members from all the unions around the state that came out to support us and to explain to you why you should vote no. The unborn aren't here. We've lived through this before. What I find awfully ironic is the golf course can employ 84 people. Well, guess what? In less than one year, this police department will be less than the golf course. So when you need help, go get a caddy, because you're not going to have a cop. Right now, this police department employs 95 people. I don't count myself, because I'm done. My career was ended by a 17-year-old on Pleasant Valley Way. I'm not coming back. There's another officer that likely will not also be coming back, and there are three others that are out. That's 90. There are 10 leaving in 2020, and there's another 10 leaving in '21. They've done zero to hire new cops. Zero. We had spots in September. We were denied by the administration to put anybody in. It takes a year for a cop to go through the vetting and get on the street. Well, guess what? You missed that vote. You missed it again, and you're missing it for '21. So what you think you're going to do with this town, when the police department's down in the '70s? Again, maybe you can get help from the Rock Spring Country Club, because they have the numbers. We don't, and we're not going to. And when you vote yes to this tonight, think about it, because that's what's going to determine who you're going to have in 2021. I'm leaving because I have no choice, because I'm being forced out due to my injuries. Some people have a choice. Everyone in here has choices. And a lot of them may make that choice, like Derek Fogg said, and pick another agency. And if you don't think that's going to happen, speak to Chris Babinski again. 179 people have been through that door. I've seen probably 100-plus of them in my 25 years. Why do you think they're not staying? Because they don't get paid, and they don't get benefits on retirement. So sell out the unborn, vote yes, and the blood's on your hands. Just remember that when it comes election time. There's three seats worth of life for you.
Good evening, members of the council. Brent Scott, Nestro Road, here in West Orange. I'm not a member of the police or of the fire, but I want to support our first responders here tonight. My wife and I purchased a home in West Orange several years ago, and I can tell you, as someone, as an African-American male who grew up in New Orleans, who lived in New York City and Los Angeles, and places where the police have just horrible reputations, I'm very proud of the police and fire that I have encountered in West Orange. I'm actually comfortable enough to go up to them and introduce my two sons, ages seven and 10, too. I would never do that in other places where I've lived. So I'm proud of these men and women, and I find it ironic that this council, by a slim majority or any majority, would even think of giving them a contract that they're so adamantly opposed to. Now, in my professional career, I am an adjunct professor at Mercy College of New York. I teach graduate studies. And one of the first things we teach in business is about turnover and retention rate. These officers are telling you, these policemen are telling you, that you already have a retention problem. And that is the biggest cost to organizations, much bigger than the West Orange Police and Fire Departments, is turnover. It takes a lot of time and a lot of money to train new people, and you don't always get in the best quality people. I am very proud to live in West Orange. I'm so happy to be a resident here. My family loves it here. And I can tell you, I have never, ever come to a mic before to say how much I like the police, anywhere. But I do like the police in West Orange. I've actually interacted with them, and again, I've been happy to introduce my two boys to them. So I hope that you will consider strongly what it is you're voting for. If they're telling you they don't want it, that this is not what they want, and you can save $4 to $5 million doing what they are asking you to do, as a college professor who teaches business, I encourage you to listen to them. Thank you.
See...yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Matula. I'm a fire captain with the West Orange Fire Department, and also I'm the President of the SOA Local 228 here in West Orange. Over the past 22...maybe about two years or so, we've been in contract negotiations with the township, and we've negotiated our best. We brought back everything to our union membership and explained everything. We also had the mayor, and we had Mr. Sayers come to our meeting and explain everything in detail. We reached out to our attorney, and this has been going on for quite some time. We voted on this contract back in February, and it passed. There were some language issues that were in the past, that...over the past eight months or so, that changed significantly enough where I felt, and along my executive board felt, that we need to bring this back to our membership to have another vote on it. And the second vote actually passed more than the first vote did in February. So this is on us. This has nothing to do with me. This wasn't something that was taken lightly. This wasn't something that was decided overnight. This was something that my union membership decided to vote on and accept. They're well aware of the details. They're well aware of everything. They're well aware of the raises that are involved. They're well aware of the benefits that we're going to get and future hirees are not going to get. They're all well aware of that. So they have voted on this, and they have accepted this. I did not have a vote in this. I presented this to my union membership, and they voted on it. Okay? And in terms of the police, I do appreciate your support and for all the other unions that are here. We always have your back, no matter what. Whatever outcome the council has in this, we always have your back. And yet, outside, or in the street, we always have your back. This is...this isn't business...this is business here, but in terms of out there, we always have your back. We're not going to turn your back on the unit, because you're here voting, trying to get this to vote against us. We're not going to do that. Okay? We always have your back, and I hope you have ours as well. So just be just cognizant of the fact that our union voted on this and accepted it, not only once, but twice. So if there's anything that anyone has to say, I mean, I'm speaking on behalf of Local 228. If anyone has any questions or anything, please let me know. But that's all I want to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the back? Is there anybody in the back over here? Yes, sir, in the back? Yes, sir. And then you'll be next, sir.
My name is Brian Murphy, past president of Local 25. Going back, as the state PBA president stated, okay? Going back, all the negotiations I went through as PBA president, there was a time that we came in front of the council, not the present council. But we did not want to get out of the state plan to begin with. We were fighting to stay in that plan because that plan was stable for us. And that's why we fought and argued to do it. Along those lines, with negotiations and with the benefits and stuff like that, we've never had unions that have gone ahead of themselves. We've always had parity with all of us work together to make it fair for all. That's part of negotiations, to step forward and say, we got to do what's best for our membership and also to make sure that we do the right thing for the township also. And it's always worked that way. That's all these people are looking for. They're looking for equity. They're looking for the same thing for everybody involved. That doesn't mean that somebody coming on isn't going to get it. Because as soon as you get somebody coming on that's not going to get it, they're not getting equal. They're getting less. Okay? And they're not going to negotiate for less. You know that. So we're asking you to please do the right thing with this, okay? These good men and women of the police and fire department are trying to do the right thing for you. Let's do the right thing for them, please. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Freeman. I'm the vice president of New Jersey State PBA, 158 Main Street, Woodbridge, New Jersey. For the PBA, I'm in charge of labor relations, basically. Do a lot of contracts, grievances, obviously. And I know about this process of negotiating. What's disheartening is the FMBA SOA decided that they are going to vote on this because it's good for them. And it is probably good for those members that are currently there. The problem becomes it's not good for the members that are coming, and it's also not good for the community at large. Essentially, you will be able to hire people. You're going to hire people, and they're going to come, and they're going to move, whatever it may be. The people that are going to stay are the people that are forced to stay. These are people that don't have the wherewithal to protect themselves in the long term. But you're asking them to come and protect your community. That's a dangerous game that you're playing. You really have to think twice about somebody who doesn't understand that they'll have nothing should they get hurt. When they come to realize that they will have nothing, they're not going to do anything. They're not going to help anybody in the community. They're going to try to get out, to get to a job where they're already trained to do, where they're already comfortable doing, and they're going to move on. Whether it's for more money, same money, but as long as they're going to be protected when they do get hurt. And I say "when" because every, every police officer ends a shift in the emergency room at some point. A lot of us end it permanently. That's the unfortunate reality. And for you to come and think that you're going to do something, take $4 million this year, $4 million next year, and $4 million for 20-plus years to come, and it's just going to increase, and think you're going to get a return on investment at some point that's going to equal what you're risking? It's never going to happen. You're not going to get that $120 million back just by saving what you would be saving if you went to the state health benefits plan today. We're always going to be less than the insurance brokers. Always. It's a larger pool. It has to be cheaper. That's the way insurance works. Everybody should understand that if you're voting on that. You can't have an argument against it. And for you to vote, just because they say it's good for us, and that is what really bothers me in a union situation, it's good for us. Today, yes, something is very good for me, however, it's not good for my membership. So I'm not going to say, let me have it and screw everybody else. That's a terrible thing to do as a union leader. I can tell you, I ask as leaders in the community, as the representatives of the community, look out for your community members and say, we're not going to become that revolving door of people who cannot get employed somewhere else. We're going to take them and throw them a couple dollars here and there and watch them screw up. Or watch them get hurt and not be protected. That's not what West Orange is about. West Orange is a fine city. I'm a police officer in the City of Summit. Same situation. I've been to the table, and I know there are negotiators who say, we'll be able to hire people. Yes, you will be able to hire people. It's not the best and brightest. And I think the residents of West Orange expect the best and brightest. You do pay a lot in taxes, and you should get that money back, the best that you can actually get. Please consider every option. In the state health benefits plan is much better than what has been presented or what's agreed to. It's a bad, bad, bad deal for West Orange. Just for West Orange. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Lawrence Dominguez, Vice President, PBA Local 25, 1 Carrie Street. Up here because you've heard everyone speak about the attrition and the turnover rates and what is going to be coming to this department and this town. I come up here as an example because I am one of those officers. I began my career as a corrections officer for the state of New Jersey. I was there about a year, and then I went to the city of Newark, where I became a Newark police officer. After about a year and a half, myself, along with three other colleagues, decided to come and seek employment here, in the township of West Orange. Because at that time, it seemed like the place where you could actually work, make decent living, have good benefits, and it was a good place to work. At the time that we were sworn in, Mr. Sayers, I believe his exact words that day were, "You guys came from a good department, but you came to a better one." Well, now, having been here almost 13 years, it's almost come full circle. Where now, for me, despite having too much time to go anywhere myself, I feel for myself, the same way a lot of, some of the younger officers feel, it's time to start looking elsewhere. And for me, if I had that opportunity, I'd probably take it. This contract proposal is only going to exacerbate that and make things that much worse. You will have the revolving door. It's starting already. I can tell you that we have members that have taken the civil service exam. That is guaranteed. They've taken it. Why? They're looking to go other places. Over the last two contracts, our membership has done what's been fair. For the taxpayers, fair for the town, and what's been fair for our members. We've taken zeros, many zeros, that are now starting to catch up. For people like me who are at top A, we've actually been seeing pay cuts for several years now. Despite the fact the mayor can waive a contract and say, no, they got a 2% raise that year. When you factor in the over-exaggerated cost of the healthcare through the brokerage compared to the state health benefits plan, that means more money coming out of our members' paychecks. Those raises are basically void. We're losing money. And now, while we watch surrounding towns give their police and fire unions raises and good contracts, we're again being told, you can take more zeros on top of all the zeros you've already taken over the last almost decade. Now, I'm not one of those people who just came here for more money. I actually became a member of this community. I'm not just someone who just came here for a paycheck and lived somewhere else. I became a member of this community. I'm a town resident. I'm raising my family here. My children go to the public schools here. I'm not living in the laps of luxury despite, I'm pretty sure the mayor would like to paint that picture somewhere down the road, as he has in the past, with inflated salaries that haven't been accurate. Most of our members aren't living in the laps of luxury. We're blue collar, middle-class, working men and women, just like many of the other families and residents of this township. And what we're looking for is a fair contract that's fair to everyone. And I think we've given enough concessions over the last decade. When you factor in the reduction of manpower in the police department, how it's been cut, those are salaries you're saving, those are benefit costs you're saving, those are pension costs you've been saving over the last decade. Where's the money going? We've come to the table and offered you over $4 million in savings to go back to the state health benefits plan. The mayor and others like to hang their hat on and say, well, that's a negotiated item. It has to be negotiated. We're bringing it to you for a reason. But as President Colvin said before, everyone wants to throw a parade for $1.7 million on a golf course in revenue. We're giving you more than double that. And I'm sorry for, you know, as far as one of the other unions voting for it, obviously, they see something in it for themselves. That's on them. But I can tell you it's going to have a negative impact on their department, their retention rates, and their future members. Now, they probably feel that for them, it's no big deal. They probably won't be here when that comes to their head. It'll be someone else's headache or problem. In the PBA, we don't operate like that. We look out for our current members and our future members. And we're asking the council to step up.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I close public comment. And I open it to my council colleagues. Councilwoman Castellino.
So I have a question for administration. So we're going to executive session. So it's on, it's on the agenda to go into executive session.
Not this matter.
Well, I want to make a motion to go into executive session. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to have a discussion.
Is there a second?
After a response to the public comment, I would support that.
Susan? Councilor?
Yes, I just, I appreciate everyone coming here and I appreciate the passion. Just to address some of the issues, I know that the police have been talking about moving back into the state health benefits plan and saving a lot of money. And I guess theoretically or technically, that's true. The administration is telling us over and over that we cannot go back into the state health benefits plan unless all of the unions agree to it. And they insist that there are at least one other union that absolutely refuses to go back into the state health benefits plan. So I, so I don't know, I don't know what to do about that issue. However, I am persuaded by the issue of the attrition and the turnover costs and our competitive disadvantage if we go to no healthcare benefits for retirees. And I do salute the mayor's goal, which is to try to reduce the healthcare costs for our town and our taxpayers, which are rising at just astronomical rates well above inflation. And it's putting an increasing burden on taxpayers. And I understand that. But I don't think this is the way to do it. We're going to be at a competitive disadvantage in recruiting the best. I think we've got an outstanding public workforce and especially the first responders. And I would not want to see, I would not want us to see, to intentionally hurt our competitive advantage to find the best people and to keep the best people. And the other thing is that we should all understand that under our form of government, under our specific form of the Faulkner Act, our charter, the mayor has all of the power, all of the power to negotiate any contract in our township, including the labor contracts. And he or she is, under our code, under our charter, authorized to negotiate the contracts and bring them to the council, the governing body, to either approve or disapprove. And that's, of course, what's going on here. But unless we act as, as a body in a very forceful manner, we cannot get into the negotiations except to tell the mayor, tell the administration what we would like to see. But we can only vote on what the administration and the mayor brings to us. And that's, of course, why we're here today.
Thank you, councilman. Councilwoman Matupra?
Thank you. Hello, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to come down. I know you have busy lives and busy schedules, but this is a very important matter. For those of you who don't know me, maybe you heard that I said I was recently elected to town council. But I have always, and this is something that John Gross, Jack Sayers, and everyone else on this stage can attest to, been a supporter as a union member myself of brothers and sisters in unions everywhere. Let me, let me first start out by saying, John Matullo, I know that it is a very difficult position that you're in, in this room. Thank you for coming out and expressing, as you should, on behalf of your members as an elected leader. I have said from the very beginning, and Mr. Gross and I sat together for about four hours until, when I was first elected, until our stomach started to grumble and it was time to depart, trying to wrap my head around understanding how the township wanted to take away retiree health benefits for all new police and fire service members. For all of the reasons that you have expressed here today. The quality of life is a huge concern. I too am a resident here, obviously. I moved here for so many reasons. And we have an excellent police department. And I know that they are understaffed, overworked. I, I really have a hard time even taking off the labor union hat and looking at it through the lens of a council, an elected member of this council that has a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of this town, to look at the picture that is being drawn to say that in 20 years plus, we will see a benefit and a savings for our residents. Obviously, I want that benefit and savings to our residents, but I'm not willing to wait 20 years. I have been of the mind, and I've expressed this in private, and I've expressed it publicly here, I do not support contracts that will continue to decimate, A, our, our police and fire, and certainly not our unions. I am a firm believer that unions are schools of democracy. Every right that we enjoy in, from working seven, five hours, I'm sorry, five days a week, to holiday pay, to sick pay, to all of the benefits that we enjoy, are directly the result of hard-working union members that are committed and dedicated to the cause. I don't believe that staying in a plan, and when we initially voted to, well, I did not vote to support Fairview because I feel that we need to start to look elsewhere, even if it is a matter of putting out a bid and they're the best bid, then I will eat crow. But as far as I'm concerned at this point, understanding the savings that the state health benefit plan had last year, understanding the savings that they had this year, I am one voice and one vote. I don't, I can't explain to you why that that hasn't happened. Outside of what Councilwoman Kocorbiak said, that, you know, we are told that it's all unions or no unions. But here's my position on it. And again, I've expressed this. What I say privately, I will say publicly always. If the administration is able to negotiate away retiree benefits, I'm sorry, I'm hard-pressed to believe that you cannot make sure to negotiate every union enter the state health benefit plan. I'm going to share with you. I'm going to share with you a little bit of my personal information. I have a chronic illness for which I have seen specialists for the greater part of my life, since I was nine. The medication that I take is pretty expensive. One of them is $45,000. When I was in the private sector, that medication was at a deductible of $65. I entered the state health plan. I paid $15 for that medication, which I now have had to double up on. In addition... In addition to everything else, and I've not lost my specialist, I'm not talking about my primary care physician. I see my specialist three, every three and six months. I've blood drawn every three months. The state plan is not the boogeyman. So again, I am hard-pressed to believe that, with this type of a savings and the caliber of negotiating skills that the administration has to negotiate our health benefits, I mean, retiree benefits, that we can't negotiate state health benefits. I am, and I've said this before, some, some people have asked, you know, how do you vote against a contract that union members have voted for? It's what they want. Well, the simple answer to that is that it is my responsibility to ensure that I am making the vote, taking a vote that is in the best interest of everyone, residents included. And I don't feel that this is the way to go. I'm sorry. And please let me, please let me just be clear because I'm sure I will be quoted outside of the fact that this is being recorded. This is not an anti-union member vote. This is not an anti-fire superior officers vote. If I was at one time a former president of my association for NJEA, I would have been thrilled to take that contract back. But that's a very different situation. At this point, I, I support all of our firefighters, our police officers, our superior officers in the police department, the fire department, the Teamsters Union, and ASME. But this is not an anti-vote. This is a vote for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. So thank you all. This is an education for me every ti, as an educator, I'm saying that. This is an education for me every time unions from all over come out. Because I want to say that I'm proud of Mr. Brent Draper Scott for coming up to say that he's proud of our police department. I'm proud of him for being able to say that here in West Orange. And I am not newly elected as my colleague. I have been here for a long time. I recognize so many people here, know so many of you. When Jerry spoke first, our sons, I know Bobby's here, but our sons were Eagle Scouts and from in kindergarten way back when. So I, I do know you. And in all the years that I have been on the council, we, you're asking us to vote no on contracts that were already signed by other unions. I've never had to do that before. I've never been asked to do that before. I appreciate Joe Matullo advocating for his, this, for his union, for the contract that's before us. I don't, I really, I'm stunned. I really don't know what to say. You're pitting us against the police, and I don't want to be in this position. And we have to continue, have to continue negotiating. I will, I do support the idea of going into executive session. The administration is the one that sit, that sits at the table. We don't. So that's why I'm saying it's an education. We're hearing from you, and then we go into executive session and hear from the administration. We're not involved in the negotiations. We get everything after the fact. So we are on the outside looking in. So we do need more information. We do need to find out more. And as Joe stated, that's what we're being told. All unions have to agree. I don't see myself voting down contracts that have already been assigned, already been signed. I just see that there has to be continued negotiations to, to make it fair, as so many of you have said. We do want it to be, you want it to be fair for all your members. And continue negotiating. Are you, I don't know. Are you at a standstill? I, I would hope not. Because look at this room. I would hope not.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Well, I wanted to make a few remarks.
Well, this is, this is.
I still, you know, I, I want to go into executive session still. There's a second motion.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yep.
So I like to make my remarks after that.
You need, you need a, a, a offer in a second.
Into the microphone, please, Mr. Gross.
So you need an offer in a second to the.
Oh, I make a motion to go into an executive session.
Yeah, I ready to.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matupra?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. My colleagues, we're going into executive session now. I don't know how long we're going to be discussing. You're more than welcome to wait because the meeting is not adjourned, so we're just going into executive session. You're more than welcome to wait, and we should be back as soon as possible. Thank you. Evening, West Orange. We're back from executive session. Madam Clerk, we're back into regular public meeting, our comments. Okay. Moving right along, does anybody else have to make, would like to make any comments before we move, anything else? No, we're done.
The door needs to be closed.
Okay. Madam Clerk, the consent agenda?
Yes. Approval of minute, I'm sorry, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting and executive session, October 29, 2019.
Consent?
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to pull Agenda Item G, Resolution 269-19, Resolution approving memorandum of agreement between AFSMI New Jersey Council 63 Local 3476 and the Township of West Orange. I'd also like to pull Agenda Item I, Agenda Item J, Agenda Item K, and Agenda Item L. These are all last-minute additions to the agenda. I don't even know whether people in the audience have these.
I, J, K, L.
I, J, K, L.
Right, before the agenda? Okay, yeah, okay.
Anything else, councilman?
No, that's it.
Councilwoman McCartney?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Matupra?
No, you pulled the ones I wanted to pull.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
No, they've been pulled.
None for me. Madam Clerk, continue with the agenda?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilman Kukov, I'm sorry, yeah, Councilwoman Kukoviac, you pulled 269-19, Resolution approving memorandum of agreement between AFSMI New Jersey Council 63 Local 3476 and the Township of West Orange.
That's correct. In a roundabout way, that's what we've been discussing tonight. Because the, the offers to the various unions are either identical or almost identical. And so that's a lot of what we're talking about. I just wanted to have a vote on it.
Can, can we just, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Matupra?
Thank you, Council President. Just so that it varies transparency and discussion with respect to 269-19. And for clarification purposes, I had some questions that I wanted to pose with respect to the reinstatement of retiree benefits. And can we talk about the Council 63 Local 346 non-supervisory employees? How many are there who are entitled to receive the prescription benefits in retirement and who are employed on the date of the new contract that's signed? And how many are in Council 52, local, I'm sorry, Council 52? How, what's the total approx, total number of those? Who are, who are entitled to the reinstatement of health retiree benefits?
I don't have an exact number for you. I will tell you that it's probably about, about half of them. About half.
Half of, out of 52? Half of what? The, the total number?
Yeah.
Half of the to, no. Mr. Gross, I'm just asking, can you just state the total number?
I don't, you know, I, this was sent out Friday. I know we have a holiday weekend. I don't, I don't have it here for you tonight. I get, I, it's something that I do have, but I don't have the, it's about half.
Okay, also.
And the cost, the cost on that, that reinstatement, because they're basically low, for the most part, you're, the overpaid employees. It's about a 1% based on, the value is about 1% of salaries.
And when we are talking about the reinstatement of these health retiree benefits and prescriptions for about half the local, are they contributing chapter 78?
They do, half, yeah.
They do? So the half, they, they present?
This would only impact current employees.
Yeah, yes, so.
And they will continue to be in chapter 78.
Into retirement? So not 100%?
Until retirement.
Until retirement?
Right.
And thereafter, the township?
And for, for that limited group?
For half?
Will, will.
Receive 100%?
Yeah.
Retiree benefits paid and prescription benefits paid.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm reading that into the record because I just want to be clear with respect to what this contract calls for. I think that I can appreciate the negotiations and the considerations, but I just want to be clear as to what the incentive is to be able to offer a local that has given away their retire, negotiated away their retiree benefits at one point, and now we're reinstating them. I needed to put that into the record.
Just, just keep in mind, this group, their average salary is about $40,000 a year. So you're talking about the, the group of employees that are, you know, that we pay the least.
So to that point, how long ago did they negotiate away their retiree health benefits? How many years?
Immediate last contract.
So when was the last contract?
Four years.
So four years ago, they made less than they make now?
Well, four years from, it was 2013.
And four years ago, when they decided to negotiate that away, they made less than what they're making now?
That's correct.
That is correct. Okay. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 269-19?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
So, I, I need to make a statement. I've been involved, I sat at negotiation tables in the past, teachers' union, and I have a really hard time to go against contracts that were negotiated in good faith between parties. I've been very transparent, I've been very honest with all of you who have come to me through this process. I respect the process of negotiations and for the persons who are involved in those negotiations. We unfortunately do not sit at the table. And I appreciate those who've invited me to come to the table. And I really, really felt honored that you thought of me that highly. But that's not the process that we have here, or the structure that we have. And it's hard for me to go against a negotiation. And I've told many of you that are sitting out there tonight, don't, don't, if you don't feel comfortable, don't come to us with a contract because I'm going to have to vote yes for it. I'm also torn tonight with the other contract, not so much this contract, but in regards to the other contract with our fire officers. Because it's hard for me. Those of you who know me, I see some of the faces, and I'm struggling here tonight. You know, you work with my, my mother-in-law, who worked for the police department for 34 years. My husband's stepfather, Richie Williamson, who got sick in his later years. And my stepdad, who was an orange fireman for many years. So that part has been tearing me apart of having to, that we're in this bloodbath of having to even be having this conversation with not having retirement benefits for our future first responders. So as I'm remembering, I'm really hard time struggling tonight because of that. But this is a process that all of you are involved in. Well, not all of you, your, your union leaders have done a phenomenal job representing you, I have to say. They've put in pressure on, they've, they've come to us, and they've done a great job with their job and with administration. As far as this contract right now, I'm going to say yes to. Because I respect the process.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matupra?
I also respect the process, but I have to vote no.
Councilwoman? Councilwoman McCartney?
I am voting yes because, as I said during the public comment response, that this memorandum of agreement was voted upon by the membership of this AFSMI union. And, and they agreed to this. I'm voting yes.
Council President Garino?
I'm voting yes because in concert with comments made by Councilwoman Castellino, I respect the negotiations done by the union and their membership. And I'm not going to deny what they want. We have to think about all our people, all our first responders who I have great respect for, many I've known for many years, many I've known your children. But we need to make this that you bring something to us that the membership, the total membership is aware of and knows of and approves, it's hard to vote against the membership. So this membership has said this is what they want. I have to go with what the membership wants.
Okay. Resolution 271-19, Councilwoman Kukoviac, Resolution approving memorandum of agreement between West Orange Fire Superior Officers Association and the Township of West Orange.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. I pulled these four agenda items because I wanted, I thought that these four items had not been presented to the council before we walked into the meeting tonight. And I just want to confirm whether that is exactly, or whether I just missed the memo.
No, I actually, I actually looked at it to be certain today. At least were sent out Friday morning.
Okay, when you say sent out Friday morning, they weren't in our packet.
They weren't in your packet on Thursday. There was, we contacted Council President, and on Friday morning, it was sent out as an addition and added to the agenda.
Okay, so how, how did the council get it?
Email.
Okay, and who sent the email?
Probably me.
Okay, because I, I couldn't find it.
Friday about 10 o'clock.
I see an email that says additional material and ordinance. Is that the email you're talking about?
And the one before that. There should be one before that.
So the answer to the question is I missed these. So I am, I'm, have, I'm just going to recuse myself on these votes, and I apologize if I wasted people's time. But I thought these were all presented to us when we walked in to the council meeting this evening, and I, I wanted to.
You don't, it's fine, councilman. There's no apology required, councilman. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, I.
Oh, go ahead.
Just to, because I was also going to put, pull these resolutions as well. Number one, what is the, and we're talking about the Superior, Fire Superior Officers Association memorandum of agreement, what is PFRS Tier Two or above?
When the pension laws changed, beginning back in 2011, the PFRS, the Police and Fire Pension System, added a new tier to Tier Two and perhaps even Tier Three. So that, that is a different group, and there's a different set of laws that impacts a members that are Tier Two or above.
Can, can you tell me what those laws are?
2011, 2013, that we talked about in there, that's the laws.
Speaking to the microphone seriously.
Again, for transparency's sake, I want to have a conversation.
The difference, the difference is, is that if you're Tier Two or above, the law The difference is, is that if you're tier two or above, the law requires that any of those members must pay at a minimum 1.5% of their pension into the system. Anybody who was hired before that point in time, or has, or became a member of the pension prior to that date in time, who are tier one members, do not have that requirement.
Okay, tier one doesn't, tier two has a minimum of...
Tier two or above.
Tier two or above. Has, what's the minimum?
1.5% of either your salary or your retirement, your pension.
Pension. Thank you. Also, number one of the memorandum agreement reads, "The township agrees to execute an individual vesting agreement attached tier two as exhibit A for each covered fire superior officer and future fire superior officer, and agrees to honor the terms of said agreement." And that's followed by, "The fire superior officers association agrees that it will not file any action regarding the individual vesting agreement, except for a claim to enforce the individual vesting agreement." Now, this concerns me for a few reasons, right? Unions negotiate collective bargaining agreements, and the proposed individual vestage agreement certainly deviates from a collective, a CBA, right? The fact that there is language that talks to holding the township harmless, which we should always do, not against that, from any litigation claim says to me that there is likely a potential of a claim. What could arise from?
Well, in this particular circumstance, this agreement contemplates individual contracts with individual employees. Any conflict that may come up between the two parties, we would be indemnified from. You know, it's more about, we don't really know what problems could be, but if there are problems, we don't want any part of them.
Councils, please, gentlemen and ladies, decline. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'm not finished. That certainly did just concern me because that language had to be put in there. I haven't seen language like that, particularly when it's a collective bargaining agreement, and that signals to me that there is a potential that there could be, because there is individual agreements contained within a CBA. So those potential liabilities to me obviously are concerning. Paragraph two speaks to paying the full cost of retiree health and prescription benefits for the duration of the fire superior officers and future fire superior officers' retirement life, including spouse and eligible dependents. Total impact and exposure liability as the paid in full cost to our residents. What is that?
I'm sorry.
What's the total exposure cost liability to our residents, to our taxpayers?
For which aspect?
The aspect of paying the full cost of the retiree health and prescription for certain members. It's paragraph two.
It would estimate for, different years, it'd be different amounts, but in year three, we're looking at would be the equivalent of 1.78%. Year four, 0.75.
Can you, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross, I need you to tell me that in dollar figures approximately, so that we can, at least so that I can understand what 1.7% is of...
Well, again, if we'd had the questions, had a time of being able to provide...
That would be fine, but for transparency, again, and I preface, and I preface this by saying for transparency's sake, that this is why I'm asking. I could have very well sent them to you in advance.
And because we're in a public meeting, I'm not going to give you an estimate. Like I said, if you want the calculations, that's something that I can provide and could have provided, should you have...
I do wish that you would provide the council with all of the information in advance contained, so that we can make an educated and informed decision. I shouldn't have to ask you for it.
With all due respect.
Paragraph four talks about the increase of the EMT stipend by 1,000. What's the current stipend?
3,000.
3,000, so it'll be a total of 4,000. Paragraph five increases salaries by 9% in three years. What's the last contract increase total for the whole contract?
The last contract?
Mm-hmm, just the total.
4%, 4%.
4%, thank you. Seven, okay, well, we've given up longevity pay. We talked about the 78, chapter 78 contributions. What does the township save immediately? Because the township does contribute approximately 70, 75%? Is that correct?
That's correct.
What, okay, so again, because I didn't ask you and you didn't provide, I'll email you this, so that you can provide that as well. The language, there is, number nine, you referenced...
I can answer the one from number eight if you...
Okay, yes, I do, thank you.
There are no members in this group that are impacted by the chapter 78 language at this time. That may change in the future, depending on who gets promoted.
So presently, since they're not impacted by chapter 78, do they contribute, is there, it's a negotiated...
No, no, this particular aspect about chapter 78, the old chapter 78 rules have, that were in place, included chapter 78 or whatever was existing previously.
Okay.
This removes, basically, the impact of this, is it removes what was existing previously. In this particular unit, it has no impact at all.
Okay, thank you. Number nine references language in Article 17 Insurance Section C, where we're removing layoffs and demotions in the new contract. Is that the only item that's being removed from that article, not having had...
That entire section's being removed.
So can you just, in layman's terms, tell me what that means?
There was provisions in there that gave rights to the union should the township do a layoff. Those provisions have been removed.
Township to a layoff, okay. The impact of the increases in the longevity pay by 1.5% in the 24th year, this is number 10, in the 24th year of employment from 10% to 11.5%. Is this a liability on the township or on the firefighter, the superior officer firefighters, the members? Number 10?
Yes, on the township.
It's on, what is that liability?
1.5%.
1.5%? If you look at salary, of total salary...
I don't know what the total salary is, so while I can read, my question was, what was that?
Well, Councilwoman, I can point you to places in your budget where that number exists.
Can you just tell me?
I will provide it for you.
Okay, you will provide. I appreciate that. That was number 10, that was my last one. That was my last question for this. Okay, that was all the questions I had, thank you.
Councilwoman, I need a second. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 271-19? Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
I'm going to have to say, this is coming. It's unfortunate, but Glen Ridge, Livingston, South Orange, Maplewood, Montclair, and Qualwell, unfortunate this is direction the states are, townships are going in. Not that we have to be going in that direction. It's, I always found the hardest thing, when you go in executive session, you can't share. You can't share what you, this is hard, you know what, this is really hard for me.
Ladies and gentlemen, have respect. We have respect for you, have respect for the Councilwoman.
We got some numbers in there and calculating in my head, it's not an easy process, but you also are not done negotiating your contracts. And again, you have, I'm not going there, I know, we have legal...
You can't talk about that.
I know, I know. I have to support this, this is what they negotiated.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
As I've already demonstrated, I'm uninformed about these contracts, and I have to abstain, and I apologize.
Okay. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
This is a similar, the resolution approving a memorandum of agreement, and it was voted upon by the membership, and they agreed to this. I'm voting yes.
Council President Garino?
Like I said with the first, you know, bargaining unit has committed to a contract, they committed to conditions. I'm not as one to go and say no to bargaining unit of the fire department, that faithfully its memberships took what they have, was given what they needed, and the membership voted to accept the township's offer. It's hard for me too, just like it's hard for Councilwoman, and it's hard for every one of us. You know, we have a lot of friends, people we have great respect for, people that we need, but at the end of the day, it's what a bargaining unit has negotiated for, and I for one cannot neglect what that has. So I vote yes.
Resolution...
We don't have retired investors, we don't.
Resolution 272-19, resolution authorizing a contract for the renewal of dental benefit claims coverage with Dental Delta Dental for 2020. I know that you are, you did pull it, does anyone else have any questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead, no, sorry, do what you need to do.
Does Mr. Gross could just go over the cost savings?
Yeah, the dental contract is a one-year renewal at a 0% increase. I'll go over the other two real quick. The other one is a 5%, a two-year contract at a 5% reduction for prescription coverage. And the third one is our excess carrier. This is the carrier that basically when we have employees who have catastrophic illnesses and they spend over $200,000, it's a reinsurance policy. We had four employees last year that went over the $200,000 mark, and they basically look at all of our claims and our potential claims and rate us based on that. This doesn't, this does not directly go into a cost of claims for next year, it'll be factored in when we get our renewal rates for, from the actuary for our health benefits, and it'll get factored into that. So it doesn't really, I can't tell you the impact it's going to have on our medical rates until we actually get the actuarials dollars from it.
I just want to, are you finished?
Yeah.
I just have a follow-up to that. So how long is this, this is a 24-month renewal, correct?
What's that?
It's a 20, are we talking about resolution 27...
Actually, I talked about all three of them.
Okay, so let's go to...
So the first one's a 12-month, the second, the second one is a 24-month, the third one is a 12-month.
So for the second one, which is resolution number 273-9 with the Benacard...
Yes.
We don't have the actual figures of what it's going to look like for the new contract? Is that what you just said?
No, no, that I do, that's 5%.
That's this, the 5%?
That's going to be a reduction in premium of 5%.
Okay, can you just repeat what you, the last portion of...
The last resolution is a resolution for our excess carrier. That's, that basically, they insure us against catastrophic illnesses. It doesn't really play into, on its own, doesn't play into what our renewal rates are going to be for premiums for our medical. It does play into it, but once I get the actuarials back, it's included in the actuarials, I'll be able to tell you what the impact is.
So the total plan estimated cost is $10 million, 390, is that what I'm looking at?
That's the, that's the, that's what the carrier estimates the total plan to be, and then there's also a max in there, that no matter what, no matter how many employees get, have catastrophic illnesses, there's a max. That really doesn't play into the rates. The actuary uses those numbers into doing their calculations for the rates. So in that sense, it, I mean, it impacts them, but it doesn't, it doesn't transfer into them.
I'm sorry if I'm looking at you like a deer caught in headlights, when I'm looking at numbers and how they don't impact the final numbers.
Well, it impacts mine, but it is not the final number. In other words, this, what you're looking at is what they guarantee to be the maximum, and then what they estimate to be the maximum. We may not end up agreeing with what they estimate to be the maximum, and therefore our rates will be different than if we use that number. The maximum that they have in there is the maximum, it can't go over that because they insure us that it doesn't go over that. So you can't look at, the number that they estimate is not going to be the final number. Could it be? Could it end up being, when the actuary does the calculations? Yes, but there's other factors that go into there. There's the claims experience for all those people under 200,000 that goes into that. This company is only insuring us for the people that they feel are high-risk.
And this one, you said the contract was for a year?
That's one year.
This is one of them. So it says, the resolution reads that the West Orange insurance broker solicited offers and proposals for stop-loss coverage for township's 2020 health insurance coverage, and they're recommending Sun Life. Did we, Sun Life was what we had previously?
We had Sun Life before. We looked at both the Sun Life offer and the other company, I forgot their name. They were much, they were, they were a little higher in the premium, but the maximum was a lot higher, so the potential coverage was not as well. We went back to both companies, asked them to reconsider. Both companies lowered their cost to what you see, to what you see there now from Sun, and Sun had the better coverage for the premium.
Okay, and then my last question is, when is the actual health plan enrollment? When does that expire?
Well, based, once these are approved, we submit this to the actuary, they'll calculate out our rates for exposure for the employees and get back to us probably within a week. So we're intend on having our open enrollment last half of November and then through December.
And when they actually receive, if this is approved, which I'm sure it will be, it goes back to them, they give you premium...
It goes to the actuary.
To the actuary.
The actuary is a totally different person.
Okay.
Who does the calculation for premium.
And then is that put out to bid for the health benefits?
I'm sorry.
Is that put out to bid for the health benefits?
And that's what, they'll give us that, that was what we will...
So they do the bidding?
It's a premium equivalent, it's what they call a premium equivalent in a self-insured plan, so we use the premium equivalent with our employees to project what the cost is with the employees.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 272-19? Some of...
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
273-19, resolution authorizing a contract for the renewal of prescription benefit claims coverage with Benacard for 2020. Are there any questions on this resolution?
That was Councilman Kukoviac.
I know, he's...
Any, Councilwoman, no.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve 273-19?
Some of... Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman, oh, sorry. Well, I guess I should say it's a record.
Sure.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
274-19, resolution authorizing a contract for the renewal of excess health benefit claims coverage with Sun Life. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
No? No. Is there a motion to approve 274-19?
Some. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carino?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading, 2589-19, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic Subsection 7-32.1, handicap parking on streets in subsection 7-32.2, restricted parking zones of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carino?
Yes. Is there anyone, if in the general public, wishing to be heard on ordinance 2589-19? Seeing none, I close public comment. Anyone on my council colleagues wishing to address this ordinance?
No.
Seeing none, madam clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to adopt 2589?
Some. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carino?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on first reading, 2590-19, ordinance authorizing special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 48:4-53 for severance liabilities resulting from unanticipated required accumulated absence payouts in connection with the layoff or retirement of employees. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carino?
Yes.
Ordinance 259, I'm sorry.
Yep. No, yes, councilman. Yeah, can we just discuss it just a little bit, just so that people know why we're doing an emergency million-dollar appropriation?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, this is an ordinance that the statutes allow the municipality to contemplate when there are costs for retirements of, above and beyond what was budgeted for during the budget process. It allows the account, allows the budget to be amended to include those costs, and then to pay them off over a five-year period. That way, the employee gets paid upon retirement and the taxpayer has the relief to pay it off over five years as opposed to upfront. We don't do it, we didn't do it last year, we don't do it every year. We do it many years, as it turns out, you know, but it is something that has been advantageous for the taxpayer, to be honest with you, especially in this time of low rates for borrowing, so.
Okay, Mr. Gross?
Go ahead, councilman.
This is, this is, this includes retirement?
Yes.
Or is, or is it just-
Yeah, it's basically, when, when we have employees who retire, or for that matter, leave some, some of it, but mostly retire. Their, their vacation days that they haven't taken, their sick time that they haven't taken, the comp time they haven't taken, all that adds up to dollars, and for some employees, it's, it's significant. We have been, we have actually done a pretty good job of lowering our potential over time of what our payouts are, but we have from many, many years ago, when there were no restrictions on how long people could hold, hold off and not take a vacation day, or, you know, not, not, or they could accumulate all the comp time that they wanted and never take it and pay, and get paid out at the end. Those people still, that it, that were allowed to do that many years ago, that are still here, still have that ability to do that, people moving forward, we don't allow that. We, we, big principle for our vacation, has to, if you, your vacation has to be taken within a year after, so you can only have them at most two years of vacation time. You can't have 10 years of vacation time. So, moving forward, we're gonna see less and less of this, but until we get past the big, you know, all of the, the big players, and there are, there are still a number of them left. Once that's gone, then we, we shouldn't have as much of this moving forward.
Right, and this is, this is stuff that, it might have been accumulated over a long period of time when the employees were making much lower compensation, but when they're paid out, they're paid out at the, the top.
Paid out, yeah.
So, so this, this, this amount was done for 12 employees?
Yes, correct.
So we're talking about, I can think, a little less than $80,000 per employee?
On average, yeah.
Okay, and so you also had said that there have been 16, I guess, you say separations? Is that all retirements?
Well, listen, they don't have to retire.
Okay.
In other words, if, 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 if I quit without retiring, vacation time is payable.
Right, okay.
So that, you'll get that. So, so that, we have 16 people, 12 of them were retirements, other four were separation, other, other type separation.
Okay. But the other four you had expected, so you would budget it for them?
Or it was low enough that I could absorb it.
Okay.
Those generally are not high dollar volumes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody with a high dollar volume is gonna retire.
I have a question.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
So when, I remember during the budget hearing when we discussed this years ago, and we did cap the accumulated absence at two years, why did it apply to some and not all?
Because it's, that's from a date when we did it, moving forward. If you accumulated it before then, the law, the law says, not, not a decision we made, the law says they get to keep it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
So is, there scenarios where someone will put in for retirement, put in their paperwork for retirement one year and just not retire and then just-
Yes.
The following-
So we don't fund that, just because they say it. Because we don't really know, but it's, it's become perfunctory. Otherwise, we'd be raising taxes early on, on, you know, asking taxpayers for a lot of money when we're not gonna spend it. So this has become more frugal.
So, so this is, this million-dollar appropriation is earmarked?
It's spent.
It's spent, okay.
It's spent.
Thank you.
Anything else, councilwoman?
No.
Councilwoman Castellino?
No.
Yes, sir. Just a quick follow-up, are we gonna have to borrow for this, or are we gonna pay this out of operating? We have to borrow, okay.
Anything else, sir?
No, I'll shut up.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2591-19, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide, and establishing the employee's status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carino?
Yes. Any, any discussions? Yes, councilwoman?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Um, what, I haven't seen this before, so creating a reclassification, and, I mean, obviously, I understand what a salary schedule is and salary ranges and salary guides, but what's, why do we create an ordinance for reclassification? Is that typical?
This is, this is a historic title-
Okay.
-that has been forever. And, I mean, it's relevant, if you do employees reclassification, you have to move them from one title to another, so it's a relevant term. It, it, it is not the main focus of what it is.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Okay. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Yes, councilman?
I know every, every council meeting, I, I touch on a bunch of pending issues facing the town and I wanna talk about it, but we wind up running very late in the meetings, and so I don't, I don't prolong things. But I did wanna ask a question, having to do with the meetings that I think are taking place tomorrow about the redevelopment of the Executive Drive area. And I don't think it's any big secret, but is, is, is there something that is moving on Executive Drive? Is it 10 Rooney Circle, or are you talking about the entire thing, the, the entire area? Because it's obviously of great interest.
I, I was asked to schedule, to coordinate the meeting, to talk about it. I, the answer is, I'm sure that there, it is moving. The answer is, yes, it's moving, and, and I think that the council, you know, there was an offer to the council, as we've done before with other issues, to bring them up to speed before the, you know, a potential meeting. I, your, your next question will be, what meetings are we gonna see, and I don't know the answer to that. I don't know, you know, how close that is. But it's, obviously, things have moved to a point where it's important to try to bring in the council, let, let them know what's going on. It's a big project down, has a lot of important impacts and aspects, so it's, it's worth bringing in. So I was asked to organize a meeting on that.
Okay, but it, it's not at this point where you could talk about what the administration's decided, what it's gonna recommend to the council. I'm just, I'm very interested in 10 Rooney Circle, just because that's something that the administration has talked about moving the library to, so.
Yeah, I, I suspect there are recommendations, but I think the first thing is to bring, bring council up to speed as to, you know, where, where, where have we been, where, where are we, and what are our potential places to go, and, you know, the mayor's recommendation is the mayor's recommendation. So, I don't know, I suspect there'll be a lot of discussion tomorrow.
Okay, and, and you may recall, I had asked for any sort of materials ahead of the meeting just because it's much more helpful to me to look at them ahead of time than do them in real time while the people are talking, that sort of thing. I already missed, very embarrassingly missed emails that came out Friday morning. Have, are you aware of any-
Nothing has been sent out as of now.
Okay.
And to the extent there's, I suspect there will be some documents presented tomorrow, but there's at least one that I know about that's not finished yet, so, as soon as, you know, we'll be happy to-
We're not gonna see it by 20?
This is, this is also secretive, I feel like.
Yeah, we're not gonna see it.
I feel like I need to start wearing an iPad.
It's not secretive, it's, you know, it's, it's pretty tough to be criticized.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean it as criticism.
For asking the council to come to a meeting to let you know upfront what's going on.
Right.
You know, it's-
I look forward to it.
Okay. If I could just respond.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't meant as any criticism, it was meant as a joke late at night.
So noted.
And I also wanna say, I sincerely appreciate when the administration-
We have another request.
-thinks about us to tell us what's going on ahead of time before we come to a meeting. And so I, I applaud the effort.
We're gonna get to a meeting and go into executives. Okay, madam clerk, we do have another, okay.
No, there's, there is a pending matter. The last time we were here, we talked about ABC hearing dates.
Oh, yes.
And we talked about Monday, the 2nd and 3rd, Monday and Tuesday, the 2nd and 3rd of December. Robert Williams is not available, so I would suggest the 9th and the 10th if needed.
The 9th and the 10th of December?
And he is available, but-
Saturday and Sunday, oh, I'm sorry.
Monday, the 9th, Tuesday, the 10th.
That works for me.
Does it? Okay. Does that work for you?
Right, the 10th and the 11th.
Yeah, I'll make it work.
Yeah. At what time?
6:30.
What time?
6:30.
6:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you, I'll let him know and I'll do the 48-hour notice.
Okay.
9th and 10th of December, or 6:30? Thank you, madam clerk, anything else?
I'm sorry?
You're gonna circulate an email about that?
I will, yes. No, thanks.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
We have-
We do have an executive session.
We have another executive session.
Yes, the mayor is in.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we gonna go into another room?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Right. Do I need to return to meeting, madam clerk?
No.
No?
We should vote and adjourn it. Yeah, that's what we did the last time.
At this time, right now, the council will be going into another executive session. We'll be back shortly, so.
No, we won't.
Oh, we're gonna adjourn, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna adjourn.
No, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Good night, West Orange, have a great Thanksgiving holiday, enjoy, and look forward to the events coming up.
We'll be here before Thanksgiving.
And remember, the last day of the farmers' market's the 23rd, so have a great evening.